Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified on October 27th. I'll call the meeting to order and ask if there are any requests. There are no requests for comments on the closed session agenda. And hearing that, we will now recess to closed session and we will be back here at approximately 6 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, I'll call our meeting back to order. Welcome to everyone here and online to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified. The board took no action during closed session this evening. Next item is the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? No changes?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? During then, we'll start the vote. Welcome to our student board member, your vote?
Hi, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so the agenda's approved, five to zero. Trustee Cusack, we read the admission statement, please.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or by filling out a Google form on the website and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and then allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you'll be then remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. So we'll move on now to our student board members' report, Jennifer, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So previously at Casper Lee High School, we had our cabaret concert last Friday, which was in the CFA. And we also had a band choir and orchestra concert on Friday, October 15th, that Friday before. Coming up this week at the high school, we have our costume contest. This Halloween is like we're gonna be holding it this Friday since Halloween is on Sunday. And we have our last home football game this Friday, October 29th, so I hope everyone comes out to that. I know that Chabot Elementary is holding a trunk or treat, which is gonna be this Saturday, October 30th, at the First Presbyterian Church, the one near Trader Joe's, I believe, on Grove Way. And I believe how that's working is they're gonna be gathering in the parking lot and the kids are just gonna go to each of the cars and get candy. And I think that's a really cool idea because COVID is still a thing. Starting in November, CVHS is gonna be having their canned food drive, which is gonna last November 1st for three weeks after that until the 19th. Also at CVHS, last Thursday, October 21st, the CVHS Women of Color for Change Club held a demonstration during lunch to raise awareness for CVHS administration response to sexual assault cases and allegations. The Women of Color for Change Club has made demands for CVHS admin to clarify their zero tolerance policy and acknowledge sexual assault and take action when needed. That is all.
Thank you. So our special guest here tonight is Vanoy Elementary School, so welcome to Vanoy.
Yes, welcome, Ms. Delatorre is here to, she was here last time to talk about another item. Welcome and welcome everybody from Vanoy.
Good evening and thank you to the board for inviting us to share about our wonderful school, Vanoy Elementary. This evening, I'll be presenting along with two of our amazing fifth grade teachers, Amanda Galvan and Tess McConnell, about our school theme of the year, coloring the world with kindness. It's hard to believe that we have been in normal school, as the kids call it, for almost three months. Our students, families, and staff are so glad to be back. As our students transitioned back this year, we as a staff discussed, how can we help to support our students during the pandemic? We quickly determined that our children needed to be welcomed back to a school and community that is filled with kindness. Our teachers and staff are working together to make sure that our school theme comes alive in the classroom and around campus. Our students enter our school, they are greeted by our Color the World with Kindness wall, reminding them to use their positive power. In the classroom, our teachers are implementing second step and anti-bias lessons that foster skills such as empathy and how to help create a safe and comfortable learning environment for all. During our school-wide morning meetings through Zoom, students learn about using our PBIS pause, showing respect, including others, and spreading positivity through read-alouds, celebrations of our different cultures, and presentations. At Vanoy, it's important to us that our students understand what it means to be kind, show empathy, and to celebrate our differences. This is our school's path to coloring the world with kindness. For the next part of our presentation, Ms. McConnell will share what it looks like in the classroom.
All right, thank you, Ms. Delatorre, for the introduction. So as Ms. Delatorre mentioned, teachers are integrating kindness lessons in our classroom as well. I recently had the opportunity to teach a kindness lesson that I would like to share with all of you. Last month, the class and I read the book, We're All Wonders, which is a book full of positive messages about respecting differences, being kind, and showing empathy to one another. This story helped us have a meaningful discussion about including others, accepting ourselves, and seeing the value of our differences. Students then produced a piece of writing in response to the prompt, "How can you choose to show kindness to others?", which is what you're seeing here on the slide. This activity lent itself to encouraging students to take ownership of fostering kindness at our school and beyond. I was really impressed by the responses I received from the students, such as creative ideas of how to include others in activities both in and out of the classroom. As a teacher, I can't wait to see their kindness in action and the impact that this lesson has had on my students. Next, I would like to invite my grade level colleague, Mrs. Galvan, to share more about kindness at our school.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. As teachers are incorporating kindness in their individual classrooms, our whole student body is working together to show kindness on our campus and in our community. In this video, you'll see kindness in action. We'll hear from more teachers and students about how they're spreading kindness across Vanoy. You'll also see our student leadership team, the Courageous Cougars. As a fifth grade teacher, it's a very special and exciting privilege to get to work with this exceptional group of students on a variety of projects that not only help them develop their leadership skills, but also help our school and our community. We're excited for you to see all the ways our Cougars are spreading kindness throughout our campus, and we hope this video inspires others to color the world with kindness too.
Hello and welcome to Vanoy. Hola y buenas tardes, a Vanoy. I'd like to welcome you to talk to you about our school theme this year. As you can see, Vanoy welcomes our community to color the world with kindness. And this will be a short video taking you through our school and seeing how our students, our Vanoy Cougars, show kindness to each other and learn how to incorporate more kindness in their lives, not only in their classroom, at home, and in our community. So shortly, we're going to be going into room four, where we're going to observe a lesson of our students learning how they can be more kind to one another.
In our classroom, room four, we are learning about bucket filling. And we've talked a lot about how bucket fillers in our class take the time to fill one another's buckets. Each person has a bucket, an invisible bucket that we can't see. And our job is to work towards filling those buckets with drops. And those drops include doing good deeds or using kind words. We also talked a lot about ways that we might, someone might be a bucket dipper and might dip into other people's buckets and make them feel sad. So in room four, we were working on a project, they're writing ways that they can be bucket fillers either at home or at school.
Thank you so much for your wonderful lesson. Now we're going to go visit our outdoor playground area to see what our kindness ambassadors are doing.
At our school, we are Courageous Cougars. Courageous Cougars are, or is a leadership program for all the fifth and fourth graders at our school. One of our jobs is kindness ambassador. Let my friend explain the rest.
What a kindness ambassador is, is that us fifth graders would take our morning recess off to watch the Second Person kinders. We will look for the ones who are using their positive power, especially the S, which is safety. We will give the ones who are using their positive power a sticker to reward them. Now, we will also tell them why we gave them this sticker and we will tell them to keep it up.
This is one of the ways that we can show our positive power at our school. The kindness ambassadors have been amazing to our second graders. They are excited to find them out at recess and they are honored when they receive a sticker from the kindness ambassadors. My second graders love being recognized for their kindness to others and they love sharing their stickers with me after recess.
An act of kindness that my friend Victoria did for me is give me a cookie pot when I was sick so we could have a shared amount.
Someone showed their kindness by when I fell down, someone asked the yoga duty and they came and helped me up and then they gave me a band-aid.
This is our kindness tree and this is a spot where everybody gets to write down a note of an act of kindness that they have shown or somebody else showed to them. Here, everybody gets to see the wonderful kindness and happiness we have here at Vanoy.
Look at our amazing kindness tree and how it's growing on our wall here with all of our acts of kindness watching it bloom. And these are all comments from our students and staff. Now, we're gonna go with our courageous Cougars to see how they're helping to support and spread kindness through our community.
We're showing kindness in our community by hosting a costume drive here at Vanoy. As you can see, we have a lot of costumes already and hopefully we get even more to donate so other kids can have a good Halloween like us.
Thank you so much for visiting with us today at Vanoy. We hope that you also have the opportunity to color the world with kindness. And don't forget to use your.
I'll invite our principal, Mrs. Delatorre, back up to close this out.
Thank you very much for, I'll back up a little. Thank you very much for allowing us to come in this evening and to share about Vanoy. This concludes our presentation.
At this time, we're gonna recognize a very special Vanoy student. The governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary School, are proud to honor Zaline Savannah Casanova. Zaline truly models what it means to use positive power inside and outside the classroom. She is kind, trustworthy, hardworking, respectful, and overall an outstanding role model for her peers. Other students are constantly drawn to her calm, accepting demeanor and natural tendency to do the right thing. Oh yeah, I'm so.
So if you want to take photographs, just go wherever is the best angle, even behind us or wherever.
Zaline is a reflective learner and although she has a lot to contribute, she actively listens to others and works collaboratively with her classmates. Zaline's commitment to furthering her education is inspiring to teachers and students. She is dedicated to going above and beyond and this is evident in her stellar schoolwork. Zaline is comfortable asking clarifying questions and takes every opportunity to extend her learning. Zaline is very deserving of this award and we know she will have a positive future. The governance team joins Vanoy Elementary School in honoring Zaline Savannah Casanova as an outstanding student.
Zalen, do you want to introduce anybody who came with you tonight, any family members or anybody?
Hi. So it's Jessica Pacheco here. Come on down, Jessica. So the governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary, are proud to honor you as the parent volunteer. Jessica's been a part of the Vanoy family for 10 years and her oldest daughter, who's now in high school, first became a Cougar. Between then and now, Jessica and her family have helped the school in almost every way possible, big and small. She's an active member of the Vanoy Parents Club, which has helped coordinate T-shirt orders, fill leadership roles to organize big school events like Cougar-Thon and the Fall Festival. The Pacheco family has even donated the use of their barbecue for the annual back-to-school barbecue. Barbecue's really good. Jessica's is a super broom parent, which is an especially big undertaking in fifth grade because it also includes chairing the fifth grade commencement committee, all of which Jessica has done with a smile. Even when she couldn't be on campus this past few years, she was the first to ask what supplies she could donate for classrooms, including a very special memorial tree. She's often the first one to show up and often the last to leave. In short, Jessica is one of those extra special types of volunteers. She truly embodies the Cougar spirit and is the heart and soul of the Vanoy community. It's the spirit in parents like Jessica that make our school the extra special place that it is. All of us teachers, staff, and Vanoy family feel so lucky to have gotten the opportunity to work with you over these past few years. So the governance team joins Vanoy Elementary School in honoring Jessica Pacheco as an outstanding volunteer. Congratulations. Is there anyone you would like to introduce or?
Well, there's my oldest, she started it all at Vanoy. My middle page, she's now at Canyon, and then Parker, who you saw in the video. He's a fifth grader, Ms. Galvans.
We should take a picture of your case.
Oh, that's a great idea.
And my husband and I also are products of Vanoy. We went to Vanoy a long time ago, so it's pretty special that our kids got to experience.
All right, everyone say, "Go Cougars" on three, one, two, three.
So we'll take a few comments and questions, but the first thing I'd like to do is ask Doris if you would introduce your faculty members who are here with you tonight.
I already introduced our two amazing teachers. We have Amy Valvo, who's our RTI specialist, and then we have Andrea Danko, Mr. Lewis.
Hey, guys.
I'm not wearing my glasses, so I hope I got it. And then we have some former students of Vanoy.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that presentation, I loved it. It was actually so funny because Ms. Ormsby was my third grade teacher at Stanton and principal before she went to Vanoy. And I actually remember doing a similar activity with the buckets. And I just think that, like, I remember like opening the notes for my classmates and reading them and it really warmed my heart and just like, you know, that sense of community is like super important and that concept of like taking and filling someone's bucket or like someone's heart, I think is really important even for adults. And yeah, I just loved the activity.
I just want to say it's nice to see you again, Principal Delatorre. We saw you last week and I just really, I really appreciate the idea of coloring the world with kindness. Like, it just is all encompassing and to be able to see the things that you're doing at the school and how it's affecting the kids and those positive praises. I mean, actually going and celebrating kids for being kind to one another. I think that just creates a wonderful community and the work that you're doing with the students. So just appreciate all the work that you're doing and thank you, Amanda and Tess, for joining us today as well. Zaline, you know, I'm gonna be a little cheesy here, but you're coloring your school with kindness. That's what it sounds like to me and you're smart and helpful and congratulations again. And Jessica, cheesy again, you've been creating community and coloring Vanoy with kindness for 10 years. That's really amazing. Thank you for all the work you do. We couldn't do it without parents that can contribute to our community.
Well, I just want to congratulate both of you again. I was really lucky to be at Vanoy the day that y'all were putting up the coloring the world with kindness mural. That's just fantastic and it's, we've really felt the positive power here tonight. So thank you all so much. It's great having you here.
It's really good to see Vanoy. It's a school, I've had a couple of students from back in, from home hospital and whatnot, and really wonderful school. Your, Lavender stole a little thunder there. I was gonna talk about the, your theme also, Color the World with Kindness. It's really such a great theme because it encompasses so many different things, really. Terrific to see the anti-bias lessons and showing empathy, the PBIS, all of these things that you're doing. And the video was really fabulous. Zaline, it's really good to see you showing what that theme is, kindness. And to Jessica, also being a super mom, super parent for Vanoy. It's people like you that really keep the schools wonderful. Thank you.
Ditto to what everyone said. Congratulations, Jessica and Zaline.
Yeah, ditto to everything everyone said. I love, some of the terms I learned today are awesome, like bucket dipper and bucket filler. Really, really important as we think about, you know, coming back and normal school. That's what makes me happy when I now get to walk around classrooms and see our students in class. I love all the ideas of, that you're spreading about kindness and, you know, as I think about just being kind to one another, you're also being really kind to the environment with your costume donations because they're not just going to waste buying another one. You're actually like recycling these things. So it's, the whole concept is just a part of what it is. I love visiting Vanoy every single time. They've got an amazing principal, Ms. Delatorre, and awesome teachers and staff. Zaline, you're just a model of what kindness should look like and how people should behave. And of course, the Pacheco family has done so much for our school district, not only at Vanoy, but just all over as parents. So thank you so much, Jessica, for being a super, super mom, super, you know, parent. And I know you will continue to do that as the kids grow up and move on to middle and high school. So thank you so much. Great job tonight. I love the video.
Got to visit Vanoy yesterday and see a lot of these things in action up there. And it's a very happy campus, I have to say. It's one of the things that really struck me, very happy. The students and the staff both seem to be, maybe it's the proximity of Halloween or something, but a lot of great things going on up there. A lot of great improvements from Measure G, the whole front of the campus looks really beautiful now. It's fabulous and so thanks for the visit and thanks for your report tonight. And congratulations to Zalen and Jessica for all your great work up there. So thank you for a terrific report again.
Thank you very much.
About a three-minute break here to let any of us who need to go home and do some homework or get to bed or whatever for school tomorrow. So thanks for being here tonight. With the party going outside. So do we have CSEA online? Great. Mark, wherever you are, we're glad to have you.
After, after a year and a half, I have still not mastered this. So, hi, everyone. How's everybody doing? Taff Connie was here. So, yeah, good evening. I want to start, actually, by thanking members of Connie's membership in the maintenance department for making sure that after that monster storm on Sunday, our schools were safe and ready to go on Monday. The first storm of the year usually reveals what needs to be fixed, and I have not heard any of any unsafe working conditions or unsafe working environments. And that's in part because of our maintenance staff. So that's great. I also see that one of the agenda items is to increase the volunteer substitute teaching rate. I encourage you to vote yes on this item. This has been touched upon in my last two board addresses. We are in the midst of a substitute teacher shortage, and it is not unique to CBUSD. An incentive to volunteer to substitute teach is definitely welcome. I have addressed the board on how precious every minute of our day is and preparation periods are essential for so many reasons. When our teachers lose their prep, they lose an hour of time that is, and that is very difficult. I'm thankful that CBUSD agreed to meet and discuss this and that they have brought this to you for your approval. This year is not really getting any easier with the uncertainty that COVID still has over our profession. I have spoken with principals that dread reading their emails because they fear a COVID case at their site, which will trigger the contact tracing process, which results in students being sent home to isolate. This process is difficult for our administration, and I am thankful that they are following proper guidelines and working hard at keeping the sites safe. Isolating and quarantining students also creates a lot of work for our teachers, who are responsible for providing work for students who are isolating. This circles back to why preparation periods are so important to our members and also illustrates the extra workload that COVID still creates for everyone in our CBUSD community. I read an article about a school district in Virginia that shortened school days to address the extra work and emotional drain that COVID brings to staff and students. The goal, their goal, is to have more uninterrupted preparation and collaboration time for teachers. This is when teachers could put together work for isolating students, for example. Really, at the end of the day, it is a recognition, supported by families in the community, that things are not normal. They're still not back to normal. It is a recognition that students and teachers need time to breathe, and the goal is sustainability of quality education. Our staff here is, our staff is always here for our students and community. And I do worry when I speak to some of our membership about their health. Teachers still are staying very late after contract hours to meet the needs of their students. They use their weekends to grade essays, and they feel the pressure to meet every new expectation that is coming to them from their administration. I have had a few conversations with teachers that want to take a semester's leave of absence starting in January. I've had conversations with folks who asked me what would happen if they just resigned mid-year. And these are very difficult conversations to have. One of our goals as a leadership team is sustainability. We want our teachers to stay at CBUSD. A group of veteran elementary teachers are scheduled to meet with the district in two weeks to address ideas. Not shortening the school day, but ideas on how to maintain sustainability for our staff. I am thankful that we have such dedicated members who are asking for support because they care so much about the students that they work with. And I'm also thankful that CBUSD will work with us on sustainability. So thank you very much, guys, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any requests for, to speak? Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. This is an action item.
I would move that we pass it, that we accept it.
Second. Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to vote. Jennifer?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so the consent agenda is approved, five to zero, down to the superintendent's report.
Yes. Just waiting for. All right, Halloween. That's me with the pumpkin on my head. So here we go. Just some COVID-related topics and then other updates. As you have heard, I'm sure, just, you know, on media and from the health department, things are stable. We are actually in what they call yellow tier, and because of low hospitalization rates as well, we feel like we're in a really good place. Eighty-four percent of Alameda County residents have been vaccinated and eighty-five point six percent in Castorelli. So that's awesome. Hopefully, we'll continue to get even more, a higher percentage. So once the, the, once children five to 11 actually are able to get vaccinated, that percentage will go down because the denominator, of course, will be bigger. So yesterday, October 26, the FDA advisory panel actually approved Pfizer vaccine for ages five to 11. So we're hoping the county is working really hard to kind of roll out this vaccination. We will continue to work with Safeway and CVS and places like that to see if we can have vaccination clinics here. But the county is focusing more on areas where there is a bigger need. We also asked about the flu, having flu clinics, because we've had flu clinics before. But this year, we are not going to be able to do that because county is really focusing on where they need to focus with all of the work with COVID and flu clinic. So as far as masking, I think everyone was kind of waiting for November 1st to hear any changes. What we are hearing is there will be no changes coming for masking at least the first semester. So we're good to go. And as you see on the side is, you know, the percentage of folks that have had vaccination already, one and then fully vaccinated. And right now, our staff actually qualifies to get their booster. And I know that Dr. Zamora just sent some information out again about that and where to go. We want to encourage folks to go to their healthcare providers and pharmacies versus the, you know, it's not as, it's not difficult at all to get your booster shot. So vaccination mandate information, this actually was put together by Alameda County Office of Education. Kind of sharing with, with everybody who it applies to and where the process is. Right now, there is no mandate, but there is conversation at the state level about a vaccine mandate. And as you see, they're talking about ages, ages 12 to 17 versus five to 11. Students who are under age of full approval, but within the great span, will be required to vaccinate once they reach age of full approval. Again, I want to say there is no mandate yet, but this is the conversation that's being had at the state level and the county. Volunteers, I have been asked many times, and I can't tell you how much we miss our volunteers. Especially in transitional kindergarten and kindergarten, the teachers really, as Mark mentioned, I mean, all teachers are working really hard. But really, in transitional kindergarten and kindergarten, there's such a need for another body, other people helping. So we are working really hard to make sure that we have all the processes in place, and we are hoping to get that started very soon. I want to thank Amy Kair and who worked with our nurses and Mr. McMaster and Mr. Gotchew to kind of get all that detail worked out. And we want to start with, like, the youngest students because our teachers need one. But we will be asking for proof of vaccination for any volunteer, and there's a whole set of criteria that they will meet so that it's a stable group of people coming in to volunteer. So exciting news coming your way. That information will be communicated to families as well through school. And then travel and field trips. There is a one-pager, actually, when this is posted, there is a quick one-pager for international travel and national travel. It kind of encourages people to do certain things, but school-based trips will need to require everyone is vaccinated. We haven't had any yet, field trips like that. But really, the message from the county was be nimble when it comes to field trips and trips in general. Be very careful as you're traveling. Positive case dashboard, we always have this on our website. And as you see, here's where we are. So October, we've had, you know, the number of cases for staff and students. Ten students and seven staff, and I can still say transmission is not happening within schools, which is really wonderful. Again, thanks to the parents and staff for working so hard. Other district updates, just a couple of quick things. Paper, we're really excited about this because this is a free and unlimited, one-on-one tutoring service available to students 24 hours, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to sixth to 12th graders. And in over 200-plus academic subjects, so all of our subjects at the school, we have it. Writing feedback by paper tutors, they, students can, you know, work with a tutor on their papers. Each specialist that they have hired is a carefully selected, rigorously trained employee of paper, not a contractor. So tutor managers are trained in safe talk and can identify at-risk students, and there is communication with the school and with staff. Help is available in English, Spanish, Mandarin, and French. So not only do we have all of these languages, also, if they are taking classes in these, but we can, the tutoring can happen actually in these languages for students. And after our home, after our's homework help, you can ask any questions. I mean, the fact that it's 24 hours a day, it's amazing. So students have that available. So more information will come. Ms. Kair is working with Educational Services. I want to thank Dr. Raymond for all of that work and getting this actually done. And Mrs. Perator. So on the side, I, you have, so there will be information like this going. And then the naming committee, I just wanted to update the community and the board. I want to thank Trustee Theodore and Trustee Adams. We met. So these community members were selected from the group that had applied. And a letter has gone out to them. And then staff members, we have the high school principal, as well as Mr. McMaster, who used to be a coach, and also a student services board members. And then teachers or, or just classified employees can apply right now so far, even though it went to all employees. We have had seven or eight, almost 10 applicants. And we have two teachers currently, or teachers and actually classified, we'll make sure to, to let them know. It's actually the message that went out, went to all employees. So we're asking for two, but we want them to be community members as well. So they are employees, but also community members. And then two student board members, which includes Ms. Jennifer, me, and also our student board body president. So, and we'll get started with that. Our first meeting is the middle of November. Our meeting is in the middle of November. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to inter.
A comment and two questions. Oh, two comments and two questions. I really liked your PowerPoint. That was really, I don't know where you found this.
Ms. Kair finds all these beautiful things.
Super cute. It's really great to hear about the volunteers. I really appreciate the creativity of our parents' clubs and PTAs in trying to maintain a sense of community during these times. And I know that that's been weighing on a lot of people, but not being able to, so thank you for bringing that up. My two questions, in talking about field trips, do we have a sense of outdoor school, school, if that might be restored in the spring? Or there might be a makeup outdoor school for those kids who have missed it through COVID?
Yeah, so the difficulty with outdoor school and, and, and things like that is because we have to, they have to know if we are going. So they're in a bad position too. But we don't really know what's going to happen in December, January, February. If they give us a date in, like, April or May, that's a lot easier. But for, I think, for one of our schools, they gave us a date in December or January. So it's, they have to really think about that, whether they want to sign up because you don't get a refund and you don't get to redo. So that makes it really hard.
Excellent.
So we'll see.
My second question with regards to the vaccinations. What that proposed rule would be, would align it with all the other vaccinations we currently require. It would be aligned with that standard?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am, I'm hearing, like, next year with, you know, probably around July. And then it would be just, if that's a mandate from the state, it would be a part of whatever vaccinations.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, I think for field trips, for, for science camp, outdoor school, it, you know, a lot of school districts are just deciding not to because they don't have, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. And once we pay into it, you can't get the money back.
Okay, I'm super interested about this paper tutoring thing, but a question about it. So is it like an online service? Like, could you just explain it a little more?
Yes, yes, actually, I should have said online. It is online, so you can, you will get, and actually via text as well. So actually, perhaps Dr. Raymond can give you more information because he's the one who has the most information.
Yes, and, and you're being humble in saying so, really, as Perator and Ms. Amadi were also integral, especially Ms. Perator. But the program is an online program. You can also access it using a smartphone, using text features. There are tutors on the other end who are interacting with you live. You can also, in the case of math and other subjects where you need to upload or send a photo or send images, you can also utilize images. One great feature they have for writing assignments that's really cool is that you can actually send off an entire essay. If you want someone who's going to help proofread it and kind of give you feedback on the editing pieces, you know, kind of your grammar, usage, mechanics, all of those pieces. They'll do that all as well. Most of the tutors that are online are college students. So they're still young enough that they remember history, unlike me, where the Cold War and Vietnam War, where we're central, it's, they're much younger and remember what, what was being taught and have been trained in all the current pieces. So we're really excited about it. There are a couple of local districts that have also brought a paper on board. And the two other districts that are local have really gotten rave reviews about the support. None in out. We're the first in our county.
San Francisco and Santa Clara.
Yep.
How will this be rolled out and messaged to students?
Wow, I actually have to speak today. Um, so we actually put together an entire social media marketing plan that will be launched and with that will be launched in with probably Thursday of next week. And so it will be sent via Parent Square to all of the sixth grade through 12th grade families along with students. It will be posted on all the websites and then a complete social marketing push out every couple of days to make sure everybody is aware of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, one last question. So it's just like you go on the website and you get connected with a tutor and you schedule a meeting with them? Like a Zoom meeting?
So it won't be, you won't have that video interaction that you get with Zoom. But you also won't need to schedule in advance. You'll be able to go on. If you need help with homework, you're stuck on a problem and you need to log in, you don't necessarily have time to schedule something for tomorrow. You'll be able to log on. If it's late, you've been working on a math assignment, you'll be able to log in at that point and get responses right away.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. I'm, I'm super excited.
I totally love that 24/7 aspect of it because I have had my student, you know, at 11:30 ask me, how do I do this? I'm like, I'm going to sleep. So that's great.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item B, which is a public hearing for the reappointment of the Personnel Commissioner, Terry Bailey. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any requests for to speak?
It's good.
Hello. Hello.
Hello, welcome to the meeting.
Oh, yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My comments would be very short. I received an email notice of the meeting and the reappointment of Ms. Bailey. And I felt it was apparent responsibility to give comment, and my comment is short and sweet. I'm in support of the reappointment. Plain and simple. That's it.
Well, thank you for your comment. Are there any others? No. Do you want to speak? Why don't you come to the microphone because then the people who are online will be able to hear.
Got it. All right. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tony Wilkerson, one of the Personnel Commissioners, and I would like to say that having Terry Bailey as a Personnel Commissioner, Larry, you got my. Yeah, who I am. It's been a pleasure to have him as a Personnel Commissioner. He's a delight to work with. His perspective on the issues that we deal with are always right on. And so I would certainly hope that the board would go ahead and, and make the recommendation that Terry Bailey be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Close the public hearing and move on to item C, which is to confirm the nomination of Mr. Terry Lee Bailey.
I'll move to confirm the nomination of Mr. Terry Lee Bailey.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go on to the vote here. Lavender?
Yes.
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 And I'll say yes. So we have confirmed the nomination five to zero. And congratulations, Terry. Would you like to say anything, Terry?
Well, I certainly would. Thank you. Could you put this up, please?
Oh, are we starting with that?
Yes, please. So first of all, I just want to say that it is an honor and a privilege to stand here before the board. And I want to mention my colleague who humbly suggests that she's a member of the Personnel Commission, which in reality, she is the head and soul of the Personnel Commission. And it is a privilege for everyone else to stand beside her. So thank you very much. One of the things that struck me in appearing before the board is to make sure that everyone knew exactly what it is the Personnel Commission does. And for the audience members specifically, I want to mention a historical fact about the Personnel Commission, and I'll be very, very brief with, with allowances given. The year was 1933 in Los Angeles. And during that period of time, there was a group of four individuals running for the school board in Los Angeles, who later became known as the Gang of Four. And those four individuals had improperly promised political favors to anyone who voted them into office. When they were voted into office, they subsequently fired all of the non-certified employees and brought on their friends and cronies. And because of that, the Personnel Commission, the civil service exams were established. That's the beginning of the Personnel Commission. On September 15, 1935, Assembly Bill 999 became effective. And this bill was then enabling legislation for the establishment of the Civil Service Commission. Today, the authority of the Personnel Commission is established, and I'm not going to give article and chapters, but it is established in the California State Education Code. The Personnel Commission is charged with the selection, retention, and promotion of classified employees on the basis of individual merit and fitness demonstrated by competitive examination and performance. And the three Personnel Commissioners, which I happen to be one of, and there's another fine gentleman who's not here tonight, our primary duty is to provide fairness, transparency, and a avenue of redress to all of the employees who actually work for this great district, and it's a pleasure to be on that board. We want to talk, in fact, I'll stop. Does anyone have any questions about that brief little history? Which again, I only know because Tony has said it enough times for me to have it memorized. Perfect. Thank you, Tony. One of the things that we want to talk about is the Personnel Commission Annual Report. And the annual report for 2021, next page, please. Oh, I, I can do it. Thank you. Tony, Terry, Chris, we are the members, and the idea is maintain a harmonious relationship with the governing board as we obviously are doing. Want to talk just a quick little subset of raw numbers. So as you may see, we're depending upon your, your sightline, it that from 2020 to 2021, there was a total number of applications of 415, down, of course, from 2018, 19, which was a 610. That 415 represents doing a almost virtual lockdown and no face-to-face meetings and for the Personnel Commission doing our work virtually since the beginning of 20, that actually established how professional the staff is and has been on, on getting individuals, getting individuals still into the system. Total number of examinations, there's 151, which again, if you look at 1819, is just slightly down from the 163 number. Appointments, there were 26 in 2021, which is slightly below the year 1819, and the total number of promotions were 14. Some of the commission activities was to develop college and career technicians, coordination of theater operations and facilities, and establishing classified employees of the year, which is an honor to be recognized by your peers and your district. And that is the end of the report. Any questions or comments, please?
I'm pretty new to this, so I appreciate this background. So thank you. I did have a question about the examinations. Are those examinations that are developed by the commission in some way, or they're standard examinations that you get from the Department of Education? Or how does, what does an examination look like?
And just to be sure, I'm answering your question, Mike, right? Sir, the examinations are actually established by the employee who managed the HR department. And those examinations for every particular job, there is a description for what that job, that person needs to have, the characteristics and skills and set. And examinations are actually established to test those skills and sets. It is actually administered by the HR department and the Personnel Commission. Primary objective is to set the standard, approve the standards, making sure they're aligned with ed code. That is our job, but it's actually administered by the HR department. To answer your question, sir. Perfect.
Terry, I just wanted to thank you and Ms. Wilkerson for, I don't know, Chris isn't here, but I just want to thank you for your continued commitment to creating an equitable hiring process that is a good checks and balances outside of the board.
It is actually an honor.
I have a question about process. What's the timeline from when a person applies, they take their exam, and they go through the process to when they're onboarded? Or is that a better question?
Well, it's a, that is a, that's a more specific question for the HR system. And the reason I'll, I'll tell you, the Personnel Commission is actually established to set the criteria for how individuals will be hired. And of course, with the HR input. And after setting the established goals, the HR department actually recruits, bring the individuals, interview them and test them aligned with the criteria that the Personnel Commission set. And I will humbly admit that although we see the recruits, we see the hires, and we see the eligibility list, I don't think that I have a clear way to be able to establish what that timeframe for every employee, because for every position, it differs.
So the timeline can vary between each of the positions. So it all depends if we have an eligibility list. So those that are interested in the position, we have to test all those individuals, and then that process goes from the rank of three, so whatever your list looks like, if there's 10, only the top three will be interviewed. Then to set up the interview process. So all the steps that Commissioner Bailey has mentioned, if you can think about, that's just one position. You add that times three, times five, and per the week, and then availability of calendar. So we can't really say it's going to take two weeks, it's going to take three weeks. It all depends on availability, and then following each of the steps of those processes. It is a lengthy process. But again, the reason it's there is to make sure that there's that fair and equitable process for everyone to have an opportunity.
And the reason I ask is because we have a similar process with Alameda County, and it takes a very long time. So just comparing systems, you know.
You know, my, my, and the chief of that old process is here, and I will simply tell you just as a business person who actually observes and manages processes, I'm always impressed with the scope, breadth, and depth of that interview process that we go through. And I realize listening to the volume of material that comes out of the HR department, they are very, very process-oriented and very, very well organized. And I, and I say that humbly from an observer of the process. And, and I'm sure if there's any specifics, the director here could speak about it.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
I just wanted to thank you and Tony, you know, for your service on this commission. Thank you very much. And the explanation from 1933, that was very interesting.
Any other comments or questions?
I think one of the last comment I'd like to first, thank you, Commissioner Bailey, for taking on the appointment, as well as thank you for being present. Commissioner Wilkerson and our Director of Human Resources leads the commission as well, the Secretary, Mr. Goshere. One of the things that I find very fascinating is that Castro Valley is only one of the few districts that the commissioner gets appointed by the State Superintendent of Instruction. So the next step is the commissioner will be, then his name will be delivered to the Superintendent of Instruction, and they make the appointment, which is very rare in the state of California. So thank you for that process.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on being confirmed to be, go back up to the Superintendent of Instruction. This is sort of a convoluted path that you have to walk to get on the board and stay on that board. But we're really happy that you are part of that board, and, and we were lucky to have three great people on that board.
Thank you very much, sir.
Also point out that Terry's a multifaceted person there. He's actually also a retired pilot from the Marine Corps. I think it's Major Bailey. Is that right?
It, it is. You can stay seated. You don't have to stand.
So thank you for that as well. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are down now to item E, our Measure, Measure G projects. Welcome, Sharon.
Exciting report.
Good evening. So yes, it is exciting. So for this, we're, we're changing up the, the presentation a little bit because we have a brand new video that just got finished this morning to show you about all, we have been working with a videographer to put together kind of from beginning till now, all of our construction improvements. So I'm not going to go over all the slides that is in the packet. So that we're going to do the video first, and then I'll do financials. And then I have some slides for Adobe. That's not part of Measure G, but I just wanted to show you. So that's kind of a synopsis of my presentation. So I think I just click on this.
The Measure G funds have changed our schools dramatically. Many of the improvements can easily be seen, and they've made learning environment much more conducive for our students and our staff. Hello, I'm Gary Howard, and I'm President of the Board of Education this year. On behalf of my colleagues on the board this year and the ones on the board a few years ago, I want to thank Castro Valley for their support of Measure G.
The much-needed modernization in classrooms throughout CBUSD have been made possible through Measure G, supported by our community in Castro Valley. Our goal of making sure that every single school site and facility in CBUSD benefits from Measure G has been accomplished. Our team has been creative and innovative, tackling the challenges of construction. In addition, we have continued to be vigilant about staying within budget and refinancing bond measures in the last few years, which has resulted in $12.7 million of savings for taxpayers in the form of lower taxes.
You know, there hasn't been really many silver linings of pandemic, but one of the few that I can think of is because the students were in distance learning, the facilities team was really hard at work doing a lot of Measure G projects. I'm a finance person, so I like to talk stats. I wrote down a few things. I saw lots of HVAC modernization, in fact, just five schools alone in 2020. A lot of schools got power upgrades. There was new furniture at dozens of schools. Technology infrastructure was upgraded at many, many schools. I saw solar arrays at three schools. I also saw a pretty cool new shade structure in amphitheater that was at Van Nuys, ADAA. So like things like how do we make places accessible for people with physical disabilities? And of course, there's lots of fresh coats of paint, both on the interior of the classroom and exterior.
I think one of the things that really impressed me was the changes to a more inclusive teaching environment. We did a tour of the high school improvements a year before the pandemic. We went into the engineering building. When I was going to Castro Valley High School, we had drafting cables and we used pencils. Now we have computers and equipment to make robots, and there's an emphasis on group learning and problem solving, which I think is really wonderful.
So for existing classrooms, we've made improvements to the roofing.
So for existing classrooms, we've made improvements to the roofing, the windows, the flooring, our structural systems, our electrical and our technology systems. As we look at adding built elements, we consider the multi-use of the space.
Once again, I want to thank all the people of Castro Valley for making this major investment in our students and in our future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Oops. Oh, oops. Can I go back? Okay, we got through. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a great video. I'm really happy with how it turned out. And so then on to financials. So we're doing good. We've from column A, just doing, you know, just doing totals. We've expended about 95.2 million. We have about 17 million, 17.8 million in covered. And we're still on budget. And I mean, we're still checking kind of the material shortages and labor shortages. And we're really trying to be creative and work with our contractors on staying ahead of what is to come. And, and in my head, thinking about different backup plans and contingencies that we can have when we need them. So that's, that's that. And then Adobe, so I really, another project that I'm really proud of is Adobe Art Gallery. And this is a project that's not part of Measure G. You know, we, we just got control of a couple of years ago and we've been renovating it slowly. Actually mostly during the pandemic. And so I, I think previously I've shown pictures of the restrooms are done. So we just finished all of the exterior and it has come together very well. And you notice that it's after the Measure G financials and it doesn't have that little Measure G logo. But since we, the facilities team manages it, I wanted to show it off. So, so some pictures of the outside, we have brand new concrete all around and new pavers. And, and we really tried to keep with the aesthetics of the gallery and really make things complement the existing architecture and the aesthetics. So just that, these are pictures of kind of the front courtyard, the side where the little grill fireplace is. And this is the more of the middle courtyard that's between the gallery and the kiln, their kiln building and the ceramics building. So this is, what I was trying to look at was creating different spaces that we can have events for. Potentially as part of the business plan, renting it out for weddings or business events and things like that. So that it creates a blend of the indoor and outdoor spaces. And we had a tour with the C V U S D ambassadors last week and it went very well and we had lots of compliments. So, so I think once we have kind of our first event or we can have our first event and the words gets out, I think it's, it's a great space for people. And that is all. That's my presentation.
We just need someone to get married and.
The Adobe space looks amazing. I mean, I remember being at C V E and using that space for our teacher appreciation. And there were roots coming up. And I mean, it was still a lovely outdoor space, but now it's so, so much more functional. So.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you for sharing that with us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, okay. So I do cheer coaching at Creekside Middle School and you will not believe like the surprise shock that me and my coach, my fellow coaches had when we walked in to the multipurpose room at Creekside yesterday and we saw those new floors. They look so good because before, when I went to Creekside, we practiced in the multipurpose room slash cafeteria. And the floors were like, these like cold squeaky tiles. I don't know, but now they're like wood and it looks amazing.
Two things, I, I really appreciate like how some of the financial constraints we faced have pushed us to be creative. And I really think one great result has been the outdoor spaces, right? It's really, I think, creating a sense of place at our schools. I love the Van Noy structure. It's, it's really fantastic. And I, I know they're constructing a proctor, the outdoor space as well. So I really think that's fantastic. And I forgot my second question. Oh, the video, the video is amazing. Can we do more videos like that? That was a really good storytelling.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been great. So yeah, we will. I, I'm, it's fun actually for us.
I, I really want to thank Sharon and Suzie. That video took, you know, they did such a beautiful job. We always wanted to do a video. So now we can share it wherever, you know, we go and we actually will use them hopefully to do a couple of other videos for other things. So yeah, thank you for everything you've done. Adobe is really beautiful. Please just come check it out.
Um, so I, I kid, but now we have superstars on the video. And I just have to say that picture of Dustin going down the slide and it was golden. Like it was hilarious. You know, I was with you, Suzie, Gary and Parveen last week at the Adobe Center for the C V U S D ambassadors meeting to share with our community members what the new building looks like. And I have to say, what I really like about it is it's not only is it, it's beautified, but the historical significance was really built into the restoration. I think that's so important for our community to continue to, you know, pay homage to our history. And so I really thank you for, for paying attention to that. And we also got to go over to C V and see, you know, what the classrooms look like and sit in some of those chairs that wiggle and, and it was, it was great to see those upgrades. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Well, thank you.
I, I just want to thank you for all of that you've done. And I really do like those covered over amphitheaters for the, that are going into the elementary schools. I think those would be really good. Could even be, I mean, while we're in the COVID, once they're done, places where kids could, I guess, have lunch and that kind of thing. So besides being able to have assemblies, you know, for community building at the schools.
Yeah, I think, I think Van Noy is already using it for, for a lot of things.
Sorry, I'm always thinking this way, but are those amphitheaters something that we can rent out to the community as well?
That's another place you can have a wedding, yeah. Advertising.
Any else? Well, thanks for that report. And you know, you showed mostly the Adobe Center, but clearly the whole district has changed dramatically because of Measure G. And it's a fantastic investment by the community in our school. So it's just, it's really helped us a lot and it's to the benefit of all those students. Thank you very much for all that work and for the report.
Thank you. And yeah, I think as always, we, we thank Suzie and Parveen for their support and also the board. It makes our life so much easier to work when we are supported. Thank you and have a good night.
To move on to item F, the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Expenditure Plan, a real mouthful.
Yes. So as the board may be aware, the Esser three funds are, were released to us in response to, and these funds are meant to be spent in response to impact from COVID-19. The funds are spent basically in two different categories. The first of which is the safety category, providing funding for support such as contact tracing, hiring additional staff to support with contacting and communicating with parents. Making sure we have P P P P E and equipment that's necessarily, necessary for safety precautions. In the second category, where really the bulk of the spending is, has to do with responding to the impact that's happened to students, both academically and socially emotionally. And you'll see that most of the recommended spending takes place, things such as looking at programs like after school tutoring, extra academic supports, making sure that we're providing additional resources for students with disabilities. Making sure that our English learners get the additional supports they need. Continuing to improve the enrichment and the, the extra supports through summer programs. And really making sure that, that it's a comprehensive view of it. This really has been a collaborative effort. We spoke into now over a dozen groups, ranging from our collective bargaining groups, different parent groups, community groups. And also conducted a district wide survey. Once we got that feedback to make sure that we're on the right track with the types of programs we're looking at spending money on. Overall, we hope that this will have a, a, a great impact in terms of helping our students get back into the rhythm of school and being academically successful and socially emotionally whole. And we hope that the board will approve our recommendation.
I'd like to move approval to adopt the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief S R three expenditure plan.
I'd second that.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? Lavender?
I just want to say, Dr. Reiman, you know, through the pandemic, we've been talking about learning loss. We've been talking about social emotional effects on students. And this, I know your phrase that I always forget, show me, you know, put your money. Can you say the phrase real fast?
Don't tell me what you believe in, show me your budget.
Correct. And so this is that. This is us really putting the money back into, to students to, to meet them where they need. And I want to thank you for your continued commitment to this work and your staff for, for really driving this home and creating a better opportunity to help these students through, you know, what has been a very awful time for the majority of our lives. Thank you.
As a part of the groups, also students really got to give us a lot of great feedback. I know Jennifer was there when we met with about 20 students. And then of course, they were also on your equity committee and all of those places. But those kids gave us the best advice and, and really asked for great things. I wanted to also say, this process, working on all of this is pretty complicated with all the funding and what we can. And I want to also thank Suzie Chan and Jason Work just in tandem to make this happen. And again, along with Raoul, just the three of them as partners, kind of looking at all of the pieces. You know, there's the staffing, there's the money and then there's what needs to happen. So I just want to thank all.
This is like a mini L cap.
Yes.
Michael.
As a father of a, of a kid who's had to miss school a few times now, the extra interventions are really meaningful. It's impacting my family directly. So thank you for, for having that for us, dealing with the fact that with quarantining and testing, like it does, it does have an impact keeping our kids out. So thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll go to the vote here. Jennifer?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
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 And I'll say yes. So motion carries five to zero. Move on to the personnel report.
So the HR staff approves a report for the board to approve.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dolly. So moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So the personnel report is approved five to zero. Move on to the certificated class period coverage flat rate.
I try to make the title very short. So this is another part where we're trying to look outside the box of what else can we provide to make sure that there's staffing in the classroom? And like Superintendent Amati said, the partnership between business, we got together and figured out what would be an adjustable rate that we could take a look at. And surprisingly enough, we were only off by a column when we look at the salary schedule between Ms. Chan and myself. So we landed on the same step, but one column off. So we were thinking the same, but we put this together to bring to the board. That's partly to the support of the superintendent, our executive cabinet, trying to come up with our areas to try to put this into place. This will really help with the last minute pieces that we can fill for one reason or another. This will really help with our staff also sending the message that we do care what you're doing. We appreciate all the work, the collaboration with C V today as well. So we recommend this for the board for approval.
Yeah, I would like to propose that we adopt this nine H, approve the certificated class period coverage flat rate.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you for the second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? It's Mike.
No, I just really appreciate the spirit of collaboration we heard in Mark's comments and yours. Clearly there's a need, there was a conversation, we got to consensus. I think that's part of the secret sauce of Castro Valley Unified is that we, we build that culture. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Um, yeah, being a teacher myself and seeing what's going on with when a, a teacher is out and trying to cover, it's really very difficult. Then this is a little piece that might make those teachers who are covering feel more appreciated. And I think it's a great idea.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yes.
Sorry, Jennifer. So I think Lavender said yes, and I'll move on to Mike.
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So the rate is approved, flat rate. Thanks for all of that. Move on to item I, the resolution to excuse trustee Kuziak.
I, I move that we excuse Michael Kuziak, October 13th, 2021.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
I get to vote on this?
You can.
Okay. Yes, I excuse myself.
You could vote no also. That'd be more interesting.
It's okay. Yes.
Dot? Yes.
And I'll say yes. So that's approved five to zero. Move on to item J, the minutes of the board meeting on October 13th.
I'll move to adopt the minutes of the board meeting held on October 13th.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
That is removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Jennifer?
Yes. Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I will say yes. So the minutes are approved and we are on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things. I did attend the Women's Club event last Wednesday and they were so wonderful and gracious. They actually said, because the meeting was for them to share what they have done during COVID. So there were these elaborate, beautiful things they had made and, and quilted. And of course, I have no talent like that. So, but they gave me time to talk about what we have done in the school district, which was really wonderful. And they're very supportive of our work. We had our C V U S D ambassadors meet at Adobe, as you heard, and walked over to C V E. It was really great to, not only to see all of the improvements, but also to hear what M T S S and what does it look like when we talk about student support? We had the Dual Immersion Advisory Committee that I attended. I've visited independent, Chabot, Castro Valley High School in Redwood. We had a parent leadership council meeting, great meeting, you know, just great sharing. We had our naming committee and I am so thrilled to say that Zoe Durado, who was the poet laureate, will actually be sharing one of her poems at the general, the first general assembly for the Association of California School Administrators Summit with 750 participants in San Francisco. Next, in a, in a, in a week or so. So I'm really excited about that. That's it.
Thank you. Do you have anything extra, Jennifer?
Um, not much, just that on this Friday, it is our senior night. I'm a junior this year, but there are football and Spirit Squad seniors who this will be their last game. So.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I mentioned earlier on 1021, the C V U S D ambassadors. It was really great to meet some community members that I had heard a lot about, but had never met in person. So it was great to. So it was great to, to hear from them and hear, you know, their comments and, and feedback. And then I'm looking forward to working with Parveen and Gary on the first to meet with the C V U S D hard subcommittee.
I just want to make a shout out to Dr. Reiman and congratulate him on the success of Black Minds Matter. It was really great being at the, for part of the initial session. I hope to be able to be a part of that throughout the cohort. And encourage anyone who's listening, I'm assuming it's not too late to be a part of it, right? And then on Friday is my graduation from CSBA's Masters in Government. I can't believe it happened to Amy, but I did it. So, so I will have that on Friday. That's all I have.
Uh, yes. So let's see, I was in, I listened to, I think a couple of the C D P H K 12 guidance calls, just to see what's going on with COVID. And you know, any questions and stuff that people have about the different regulations and what they think will happen. Next week, I believe I have a sped Selva meeting. I was, of course, we did the naming committee. And on November 4th, there's case manager, you know, special ed kid, kids, teachers were invited to a tour of Eden area R O P. So I'm kind of going there and I told them really with both hats in mind, really of being a teacher and a board member. I think the, it starts at nine, but I asked them if I could do eight 30 to nine 30 so I could get to class by 10 o'clock. Yeah. So.
Last night I was at the Castro Valley High Parent Club meeting with Parveen. And it's always nice to be at those meetings. And that was the only thing I did representing the board, but I attended the Rotary Racial Anti-Racism Forum. And it was really, it was really great. So I, you know, as a brown woman, I always approach these things with my spidey sense on, especially when I enter a room, even if it's a Zoom room full of people who don't look like me. And it was really, the place where they're coming from was genuine and you can feel it. So it was great to be a part of that. That's it. Oh, and next week I have the Eden area R O P board meeting.
Well, we'll also say that those Rotary meetings are really outstanding. They have been going on for almost a year and a half now. And they've done a lot of things with a lot of different people and it's been a huge success. So. At any rate, let's see, I think most of the things that I was at, I've already been discussed, the Dual Immersion Committee, the ambassadors at the Adobe Center and C V E. And yesterday, as I mentioned earlier, I was at Van Noy School. So last thing I'll mention is I will be out of town from November 2nd to November 9th. It's Tuesday to Tuesday. I'll be accessible by email and telephone, but I will be out of town from Tuesday to Tuesday to get my daughter married off.
Oh, how neat.
The Adobe?
Not.
We could move the whole thing down here. Probably be better. Anyway, thanks to everybody who attended tonight online or in person. And I will declare the meeting adjourned. Good night.